Okay, it's seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's June 2nd, and this is the Planning and Transportation Commission. There are no teleconference requests under AB 2449. So we are on to the pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then we'll have the roll call. Commissioner Onand?
Present.
Commissioner Bundy?
Present.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Present.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Present.
And Chair Clements.
Present. Thank you. Item five on the agenda is a public comment period for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Public comments, the commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, which is government code 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for their attention. Or we could have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. This is the opportunity for anybody who is coming in the meeting, I guess, attending remotely. If you get your hands ready to raise them, you can do that. We're going to take any comments first live here in the chambers and then go on to Zoom. So if anyone would like to speak this evening, there is a speakers form in the back. However, on the Zoom meeting, I don't know if, do we have any raised hands for this meeting? Lynette, any raised hands?
None at the moment.
Okay. I'll keep reading directions and give you all 30 seconds more to see if anyone would like to make a public comment online. You can virtually raise your hand by clicking on reactions on Zoom and then the raised hand icon. If you are on the phone, you can press star nine and then star six to unmute when I call on you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you. I think I need a motion to close the public comment period.
Motion to close the public comment.
Thank you. And a second?
Our second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Commissioner Onand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
Chair Clements.
Yes. Thanks. Item six on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two meetings of minutes to approve. And I wanted to ask the commissioners, does anyone have any desired edits to make or suggest? No? Well, then, in that case, I'd be happy to entertain one motion to approve both of the minutes together.
I move that we approve the April 21st, 2025, and May 5th, 2025, Planning and Transportation Commission meeting minutes.
Very nice.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call?
Commissioner Onand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements?
Yes.
Thank you. Item seven tonight is new business. The action is to consider authorizing a Planning and Transportation Commission summer recess and cancellation of the July 7th, 2025, and July 21st, 2025, regular meetings. It's pretty self-explanatory. I don't think we need a staff presentation on this. And again, we recently tried to sync up our hiatus in the summer with school vacation schedules so that people had an opportunity to go enjoy themselves in July. So does any commissioner have any comments or questions on the motion or on the item? I think it's a good idea. Would somebody like to make a motion?
And through the chair, sorry to interrupt. If we could just ask if there's public comment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. If there's public comment?
We don't need to do a motion, though.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm so sorry. Would anyone in the public like to make a comment about summer cancellation of two meetings, July 7th and July 21st? Anyone in chambers? No. And Lynette, anybody online?
There are none.
Okay. We'll give it just another couple seconds. If anyone on Zoom would like to raise their hand, they could make a comment on the summer cancellation of two meetings in July. Thank you. Directions on Zoom are on the screen. Lynette, is anyone raising their hand?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then I think we need a motion to close public comment. No, no motion needed to close. Thank you. And then, no, you said no motion. We need the motion for the approve. Yes. Who would like to make that motion? Vice Chair.
I move that the Planning and Transportation Commission approve a summer recess and authorize cancellation of the July 7th, 2025, and July 21st, 2025, regular meetings.
Thank you. We have a second?
Our second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Onand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements?
Yes.
And thank you to staff and city council for making that happen. Okay. We are on to item eight. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is on 1660 Laurel Street. It is a request for a tentative map to subdivide the existing 10,000-square-foot, .23-acre parcel into two new 5,000-square-foot parcels of .115 acres each. And let me, if I could, read the directions for a public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features on the application, followed by staff's recommendations. And then if applicable, the applicant can make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held on this item. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, in the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city adder prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out speaker forms, bound by the door, except if you're the applicant, and you don't do that, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting's being recorded, and this will assist staff to prepare the minutes. So with that, I will turn it over to staff. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Clements, and thank you, commissioners. My name's Ralph Robinson. I'm a senior planner with the city, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. Do I have click-through on this? Do I have to turn it on, maybe? It feels like there's a piece missing on this. Oh, here we go. Okay. Great. So as Chair Clements just summarized, we have before you a consideration for a tentative map to subdividing the existing parcel at 1660 Laurel Street. Now, the parcel is located on the west side of Laurel Street between Central Ave and St. Francis Way. It is in the MUN 40 district, bound on both sides by other MUN 40 district properties. Across the street, we have the MU SB 100 district. And then to the rear, we have a public alley across from which is an RS 6, single-family residential district. Now, this property is currently developed with an existing two-story building that includes an addition to the rear, a parking lot, and a detached garage. So the proposal would divide the parcel evenly in two, into two 5,000-square-foot parcels, each meeting the minimum 5,000-square-foot size for the district and the minimum required 50-foot lot width. Parcel 1, you can see, contains the current parking lot and garage, and parcel 2 includes that two-story building. Now, as part of the project, there are new utility connections to provide separate utilities for both parcels, but there's no other new development or changes to that existing two-story building proposed at this time. Now, as to that two-story building, you're all likely familiar with it as the Hobby House, more formerly known as the Dr. George Hind Building, I believe. And this was included in the city's 1991 historical resources inventory, where it was identified for potential individual listing on the National Register of Historic Places under the criteria that allows for buildings that evoke or are representative of a distinctive style, in this case, the streamlined modern. Now, given that history, the applicant was requested to have a historic resource evaluation completed. They commissioned Richard Brandy, an architectural historian, to complete that. We then also had that peer-reviewed by our consultant, MIG Inc. Both the consultant's HRE and our peer review concurred with the city's historical resource inventory that this site is eligible for that individual listing, excuse me, that this building is eligible for that individual listing. The portion to the rear, that is the later addition, the parking lot, and the detached garage, however, are not considered eligible for listing. Again, I'll note, no changes are proposed to this building. So as for the tentative map itself, 1724110 provides 10 findings that must be met for this tentative map to be approved. An analysis of all those findings is provided in the staff report. To briefly summarize those, beyond the basics of meeting minimum standards and consistency with general plan and the municipal code, there are some findings related to suitability of the site for the proposed development and density. Again, there are no proposed changes at this time, but in the future, any changes would be subject to those MUN 40 standards, all of which have been subject to the typical general plan and also were currently the housing element process to study the intense or potential future development intensity on that site. And for environment review, our consultant, MIG Inc., also created a analysis for the sites, or excuse me, for the project's eligibility for an exemption under CEQA. It's found to be exempt under 15315, which exempts minor land divisions. A more full explanation is provided with that staff report. But again, there are four requirements for utilizing this exemption, briefly summarized here, but beyond, again, conformance with general plan and zoning. And again, there's no especially unique conditions with this project. So per 1724110, we provide a notice to neighbors within 300 feet, as well as publish that notice in the newspaper. At this point, we have not received any public comments on the application. So here will be the motion, should you choose to accept it. And I am available for questions. We have the applicant here, who I do not believe has a presentation, but they can answer questions or provide a little more background if you'd like as well. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ralph. I know. Would you like to just introduce yourself or say hello?
I think it's a good value for the, I'm trying to look at the, how to maximize some kind of value from the property. I would hope that somebody will come in and put some type of, you know, I would think, housing or some retail housing at some point. I'm not a developer, but I would like to sell half of it and be able to keep. I'm the Hobby House. I just love the architecture. It looks a lot better than it did in that picture.
The white and black is beautiful.
Thank you.
So much better than the yellow and green.
It's been a lot of work. But that's about the extent of it. I'm just, I was pretty much drawing a line on a map. I have no plans, you know, to develop. And I'm sure if somebody does, or if I ever did at some point, we'll be back in this meeting.
Right. Nice to meet you, David. Thank you for being here. Great. I'd like to open this up to any clarifications, questions by the commissioners. We'll start with the vice chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ralph, for that presentation. A couple of questions. I don't know a lot about historic properties in San Carlos. Does a historical designation go forward into perpetuity? Or can the property owner at any time choose to reverse that? Or could the city do that? How does that designation work?
Yes. So it's very, it does tend to be property owner-driven in that the property owner would have to apply for that official designation. However, the city, in completing that inventory, identified sites that may be eligible. So just whenever there's a project that might impact one of those sites, we like to do further analysis just to see, again, would it impact the eligibility of that site for inclusion on a historic, for historic preservation? So nothing official, but again, we have a city process we follow to ensure we protect any integrity.
Thank you. And through the chair?
If I could just add, we also do look at the historic aspect for CEQA purposes.
Okay.
So for example, if, right, if an addition was proposed on the historic building, that might not necessarily be exempt under CEQA.
And my second and final question. How far from the new property line is the Hobby House? What does the setback end up being from that new fence that's going to be put in? Yeah?
Yes. Oh, so as far as the line in the middle?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the side of the property, the building, is pretty straight down. I'm just curious, how far over is the fence?
Okay. You know, I'd have to double-check that measurement because there actually is no setback requirement in MU 40 for the sides.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, there'd be no side or rear setback requirement. There is the 15-foot measurement from the curb that's delineated here, which the building meets, but no setback requirement there to the side.
Oh, that's more than I thought it would have been. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
That's the only questions I had. Thank you.
Good. Why don't we go this way? Commissioner Onand, do you have any clarifying questions?
Yes, I have two questions, and thank you for the presentation. The first one would be, it says that all the utilities within the project shall be placed underground. Does that also trigger changing the existing utilities in parcel one underground, parcel two underground?
Yes. So my understanding is new utilities for both sites, if that's correct, David? Or is it just the one? You're not sure? Per, yeah. Per the map, all the utilities are new. So we're, you know, because we have to update those locations to provide the separate utility service to each site.
Considering parcel two is a historic building, I'm wondering if you will see any challenges in moving the utilities underground in an existing historic structure, something to consider?
Okay. No, thank you. Yeah, all that work will be outside of the building footprint. But I can certainly follow up as far as if we have additional, you know, scrutiny for that type of work.
Thanks. And my second question is regarding the access. So access and parking. So I understand that parcel one is primarily a garage and some parking space. If we remove it, how is it going to impact the parking requirements in that particular neighborhood and pocket? Is it going, like, has any consideration been given to, like, is it going to overload the neighboring parking spots, the area, the businesses? So the parking capacity-wise, that would be my question.
Yes. So as it stands currently, even without the subdivision application, this site is subject to AB 2097, which exempts sites from any parking requirements if they're within a certain radius of transit. So based on the city's definition of that assembly bill, this site is eligible for that. So they could remove the parking currently without any, you know, subdivision application or anything like that. So short answer is, we don't, we were not able to enforce any parking requirement, subdivision or no subdivision. That said, there is the, with the addition to the back, I know there's like a small garage space and maybe some other, one other small parking space. But again, that would really be subject up to whoever develops the property of how much parking they ultimately want to provide. And then any parking they do provide, we would evaluate based on our standards for parking dimensions, location, those sorts of things.
Thank you. And I'll just piggyback off of this question, which is the alleyway that Commissioner Garvey was mentioning, that the setback or the access that will have remaining in parcel two, will that be enough for anything such as ADA accessibility or fire protection or things like, will that access be enough for such situations?
Yeah. So as far as the current parcel, the Laurel Street access, as far as, you know, your typical fire access requirement, because generally, the standard is like 150 feet for the depth of the property when you need like an additional access. So based on the current property dimensions, just the Laurel Street itself is sufficient. That said, you know, that is a public alley. There's no, you know, they can't completely work in the alley minus, you know, utility work with an encroachment permit. So there'd be no change to that there. And yeah, no change to the existing available site access for both parcels with the subdivision.
So even with the fence in the middle, like, if a fence comes in between parcel one and parcel two, the little alley that's left in front of parcel two will be enough for things such as wheelchair access or any sort of fire protection intervention? All that will be fine? I just want to make sure that there's enough space for access?
Yes. No, none of that would be impacted by the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we come around to Commissioner Bundy and then Commissioner Castaneda?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Looking at the site map, I think you've said that there is no setback required from parcel one so that the buildings could be up to the line. That's correct. You'd have 15 feet from the curb. I did, I think we're a little unclear on the distance that the Bauhaus, this nice historical structure, is from that line. I think you said maybe about 15 feet. With this, if housing was put on here, I'm assuming there would be some requirement on the lot for some sort of vegetation or some sort of plantings or something. Is this something that would be considered to maintain the sightline to this historical building? Is, when would that be considered? Because if you're allowing this building all the way up to the line, you're not even going to be able to see the side of this historical building, which is part of the whole design. So how would that be handled?
Yes. So the sightlines was something that came into consideration with the HRE and the review, the peer review by our consultant. Given just the wording of the criteria itself and given the nature of the building itself, those criteria don't necessarily speak to those kinds of considerations. So essentially, what you would be left with is okay with the, say there was a building built up to that line, you'd be left with, okay, the available space, as you can see on the map here. So what's something that we looked into and considered is, again, it's just we're a little, it's a somewhat narrow band as far as what's considered with that historical or potential historical designation. Oh, any new development, we just have to treat as we would on parcel one. Any new development, we'd have to just treat based on those normal development standards.
And through the chair, if I could add to that as well. If housing, for example, were built on parcel one, there are standards that it would have to meet. There's certain landscaping requirements. There's, I believe, a pathway, walkway requirement. And we would want to work with the developer early on to say, you know, locate your building to the left side of the lot, have the driveway at the right, for example, so that we could maintain that even if the code's not specific about it.
Okay. That's what I thought. So that would be something you would naturally consider since there is a So that would be something you would naturally consider since there is a historical building.
Nice.
Okay, thank you.
All really good questions. I was wondering the same thing, which is whether an historical building has some kind of view, if you will, and because the side of the building is very interesting, but it sounds like nothing different or special compared to a normal building, per what you're saying. I wanted to ask about if the, I guess, the first floor on the existing building continues to be retail space, right? What happens to the existing parking requirement for the existing building? Does AB 2097 apply to existing buildings or only new developments?
Yes, so AB 2097 applies to any project. So say, for example, you're to do a project now to convert that parking lot space without the subdivision, we could not apply those parking standards. In other words, your parking standards aren't necessarily grandfathered in because there's an existing building. So, and then as far as the ground floor, we do have a ground floor retail requirements for this district and for Laurel Street. I believe that is vacant space, but that would be continued or allowed uses would be for commercial uses in the, in the future, so.
Okay. So ground floor commercial requirement on parcel one as it's created.
Parcel two, correct, yes. Oh, and parcel one as well.
As it's one.
And parcel one as well. Parcel one could also be, it could be a 100% housing as far as.
Could parcel two also turn into 100% housing? Could the retail space be rented as housing?
Good question. So if they, if, because we're not looking at a situation where it'd be completely redeveloped as far as with an existing building. And I might have to defer to Andrew. Do you have any experience with that yet? I'm not sure if we've actually answered that question.
She seems to know.
I believe it could be assuming it meets all the building code requirements. What I'm not sure about is if, if it meets the minimum density requirements. So possibly if there was, but because I think there's existing residential above, correct?
Yes.
There is.
Yeah, so we've had that before too, where just one block down, actually, a retail space was converted to a housing unit, and there was housing units above. When we get into new development, we have the minimum density requirements as well. So we'd have to see kind of how that plays with the existing building. But yeah, there'd be net new, which is something we'd want to see.
Just curious. It's such a beautiful building. I can't imagine why it wouldn't be a really cool place to live on the first floor, so. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's a really pretty, yeah, it's a really pretty site. Okay. With that, why don't we go to public comments? Oh, did you have another question? Yeah, please. We can, let's do public comments after you get your question clarified, and then we'll go to our discussion.
Okay, thank you. So the parking lot, the map went away, on parcel one, that's currently private, right? It remains private, at least into the near-term future.
Oh, the parking lot itself? Yeah.
Oh, it's not private?
Well, people, I think people just kind of park there.
It's used by the neighborhood.
Okay. I see. Okay, okay.
Formally, public, yeah.
Okay. And I guess one last question. So when we do our next housing update in seven years or whatever, so we would then add in three or five more units as a possibility for our arena housing totals?
Yeah, presumably if it's not been developed at that point, then yeah, that could be, yeah. So if it's developed prior, then it's kind of in addition to, because it's not, it's not currently listed, yeah.
Thank you. No further questions?
You could choose to put in the inventory.
Also assuming it wasn't counted on this.
Yes.
It wasn't counted on this.
It was not in this inventory, so yes. Which makes sense, there was not a separate parcel for that, so that makes sense. Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner questions before we go to public comments? All right, I'd like to open up public comment. If anyone, nobody is in chambers, that would, unless staff would like to make a public So this is for anybody who is on Zoom who may be listening in. The Zoom meeting address is being shown on the screen, but it is meeting 886-354-67439. You could also dial 669-900-9128 and then enter the meeting ID. If you're online, you can click on reactions and then raise hand icon under that. If you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then if a call on you, star six to unmute. Would anybody online like to make a comment on the 1660 Laurel Street item? Lynette, any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. We'll give it just another few seconds. Now's a good time. Everyone has two minutes to comment if they'd like to. Lynette, any hands raised?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Then I need a motion to close public comment.
I move we close public comment.
Thank you. Second?
I second that.
Thanks. Roll call.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. So let's go back to commissioner comments and discussion. Why don't we start to my left, then Commissioner Castaneda?
I, I support this project with the caveat that I hope that if it is developed with housing, that, you know, the, that the planning people do get the landscaping put on that side of the building so that we preserve the lines for this, because it's a gorgeous building, and that Bauhaus style is just rare. You don't see it very often. It's very nice. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bundy?
Thank you. I too am supportive of this project. I thought that the, it was very clear that it's in conformance with our requirements. I would echo my fellow commissioners' desire to see any future development retain that sightline, you know, kind of through shared walkways, not putting up a high fence, those sorts of things would be good to see. And it was neat to read the report from the experts and see it as a special little building. So thank you for the opportunity to review.
Thank you. Down to Commissioner Anand.
I really enjoyed reading the historic resource evaluation. I think that was, that was very nicely done, so thank you for adding that for the parcel two building. Similar to other commissioners' comments, the building has been preserved really beautifully thanks to Mr. Taylor. He, like, it's almost like a, like a recognizing structure in the downtown. So whatever comes up on parcel one, I would just say that it should really complement that beautiful property rather than overshadow it. So just something to consider future.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Vice Chair, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I too support this project. I think the building is beautiful, and I'm excited to see what the next chapter involves. Thank you.
Yeah, I too really support this project. I appreciate the upkeep that you've given to the building and realize it's a special place. I agree that it is kind of a landmark in the city. I did want to disclose that I live quite close to the building, but I am outside the public notice radius, and therefore I am out, I am outside of needing to wall myself off of this. But that said, I enjoy going by the building, and I was happy to see it, see its renovation. And I'm happy to see the next chapter. I do think that Laurel Street should have as much activity as possible. And I think converting a parking lot that occasionally gets used by people who are not the owners, you know, when they pick up, take out, or whatever across the street, it's convenient, but it may not be the highest and best use of that valuable land there on our main street. So I was, I'm actually happy to see that it could become even more productive and look forward to any application that you would bring forward that could enhance the beautiful nature of the existing building. That would be really wonderful. So with that, I would like to ask someone if they'd like to make the motion.
I move that the Planning and Transportation Commission grant approval for a tentative map to allow for the subdivision of the existing 10,000 square feet lot at 1660 Laurel Street, APN 051373080, into a 5,000 square feet parcel one and a 5,000 square feet parcel two for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the conditions of approval as listed within the draft tentative map certificate.
Great. And I'd actually like to make the second on that motion. So roll call.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. You have it, you will have a new map when it is time. This item can be appealed. The Planning and Transportation Commission's action will be final unless it is appealed to the city council within 10 days of today's date, today, the date of the action, which is June 2nd. So therefore, the deadline to file an appeal is 5:00 PM on Thursday, June 12th, 2025. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thank you, Ralph.
A lot of what Ralph was saying too about the historical nature of this, I understand it's historical, this is why I bought the building, I love it, but you, I don't think the city has a formal historical process, or it's never been ratified by the city council. I deal with historical buildings in San Francisco, and it says, well, maybe it was, or there was an interest. And for yourselves, I think if you, if there are specific buildings like this one, that you should probably have a formal process through your planning commission to certify and state that we realize this is, because it's just kind of some report somewhere, someone said, I like this building. It looks historical.
With a form of a formal inventory.
Exactly. And I just, it just came to me that they kept saying it's historical. I understand that end of it, but technically it isn't. So just something.
Right, it's not officially on our register of the city.
And I probably, just for your own case in mind, if something was to happen, I'd do an easement to give a wide space through each property. I would have gotten 25 feet of a split, but you had a minimum 50-foot split.
Right.
Need 50 feet.
Right.
There we are, and thank you very much.
Helpful.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you, David. Okay, we're on agenda item 8B. This is a public hearing on general plan conformity determination for the capital improvement projects that are proposed for fiscal years 2025 to 2027. We do do a two-year planning cycle for the CIP. And this evening, I believe we have Andrea to present.
Good evening, commissioners. Andrea Mortisich, Assistant Community Development Director. The staff report analysis was completed by our senior management analyst, analyst, excuse me, Akansha Chopra, but unfortunately, she's not able to attend tonight, so I'm going to be covering the presentation. We also have some support from Public Works via Zoom for any questions that may arise about Public Works projects. So the item before you this evening is the request to adopt a resolution which finds that the capital improvement program for fiscal year 25, 26, and 26, 27 is in conformance with the city of San Carlos's general plan. To provide some background information, the capital improvement program or CIP is a five-year plan that prioritizes and recommends funding for projects throughout the city. We're currently in the 2023 to 2028 cycle, and just as a note, that is a correction from your staff report, which listed 25 to 30, I believe. This year's budget cycle covers two fiscal years, which start July 2025 and end June 2027. And the consistency finding this evening is for those two years of the CIP only. The city council had us held a study session on May 5th of this year where they discussed the projects and made some subsequent changes to that after the fact, I believe, on May 12th. The formal adoption of the budget is anticipated to be June 9th, so next week. And state law requires that the Planning and Transportation Commission review these projects to determine conformity with the plan prior to being, the budget being adopted. The staff report itself goes into the various projects as well as the general plan policies and goals that support them. What I'd like to do is go over, do a brief overview and really focus on the new projects. And then in terms of the policies, I'm going to summarize some of them rather than reading them all. They're all listed in the staff report. So starting with the wastewater sewer fund, excuse me, we have three new project requests, the replacement of a combination sewer truck, upgrade of existing SCADA hardware at all sewer and storm pump stations, and wastewater rate and capacity charge study. In our general plan, we have several environmental management and environmental safety and public service goals and policies, which include protecting water quality, promoting conservation, reducing discharge of toxic materials into the sanitary sewer, and then overall ensuring that there are adequate public services and facilities. The gas tax fund, there are no new projects. However, as I mentioned, the staff report does list several policies that support these two previously approved and ongoing projects. The general fund, capital projects fund, is the bulk of the projects that you're, you'll be looking at this evening. So starting with the storm drainage system, the new request is for an industrial road bridge and culvert repair project. And as I mentioned, there are several that have been previously approved. The general plan has several policies and goals, which include protection of riparian corridors, again, listed in the staff report. And then in terms of the street and sidewalks, again, a list of ones that have already been approved, but there are multiple goals and policies which talk about encouraging safe pedestrian environments, making them walkable, attractive, and supporting street design specifically for the pedestrian experience. In terms of traffic and transit, there are several new requests under this category, which include a traffic signal master plan implementation, traffic studies and pilot improvements, traffic technology and funding development, traffic signal fiber project, and a traffic impact fee TIF study and update. Again, there are several policies within our circulation element, land use element, and management elements, which talk about providing a safe and efficient circulation network for the city, supporting efforts to reduce vehicular trips, consider adoption of the traffic impact fee for new development to help support our transportation demand management measures, which are being looked at right now. And then again, encouraging the creation of safe and walkable streets, sidewalks, looking at ways to do some bulbouts, provide street furniture for aesthetics, trees, traffic calming measures, really quite a wide variety of goals and policies and actions, actually, in the general plan, specific to streets, sidewalks, and, and vehicle trip reduction. Safe routes to school, under the capital fund projects, there's one specific action that talks about the city supporting local school district efforts to reduce traffic, and this is through programs such as the safe routes to school, school, school pools, and school bus shuttle programs. So four of the new requests are for various safe routes to school locations, and then also a complete street and corridor study. In terms of parks and recreation, under the general fund, there is a previously approved ongoing project, but nothing new. And just to note, there are several parks and rec, goals and policies in terms of supporting the community with appropriate facilities, quality of athletic fields, and just continuing improvements for various public facilities. Under planning, a lot of the downtown planning, which you're all very familiar with, is ongoing. The new request is for the climate mitigation and adaptation plan. You'll remember that the update of this was one of the mitigation measures for the general plan adoption. In addition to that, we also have several policies within the general plan, specifically under our land use section and our environmental management section, that call for updating and adjusting the climate action plan, not only to comply with current law, but to make sure that we're contributing in the reduction of greenhouse gases. And then still within the general fund, facilities, technology, and equipment, the new requests are for city hall roof replacement and an upgrade and remodel for the adult community center kitchen. And this really is supported by the policies about ensuring adequate public services and high quality of public facilities. Moving to the childcare fund, no new requests. These are requests that are currently funded for new childcare facility development, childcare space reimbursement, and the commercial daycare and grant program. There is one specific action within the general plan about. There is one specific action within the general plan about supporting childcare, creating new spaces, and encouraging more quality spaces for the community as well, for all age groups. And then finally, is the Park and Lou Fund. The newest request is for parks' master plan improvements. The commission, I'm sure, is aware that the city's currently undergoing a parks' master plan update, and so this new improvements request would really be funding like the design of certain plans that come out of that master plan once it's adopted. And again, several Parks and Rec goals within the master plan, specifically about recreational programs, maintaining the trails, connections to parks, considering the recreational needs of the community, and so really quite a few that feed into the parks, park services overall. So that is it in terms of the, an overview of the CIP projects and the goals and policies and actions of the general plan. This is the motion, should you choose to make it this evening. And I am available for questions, and I know we also have two representatives, I believe, from Public Works. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. I know this is a lot of work to put together and a lot of information here. Good job summarizing all of it. So first, Commissioners, do you have any questions, clarifying, things you need to get clarified? Vice Chair? No? Commissioner Anand?
I have a couple of questions.
Please, yeah.
So the first one would be like, with this long list, like, how would you prioritize what to allocate funds to first?
So the determination of where the funds get allocated to is determined by the City Council, and so they start a process early in the year, talking about what their priorities are and where funding should go. So the items brought before you this evening are ones that the council's already determined likely will be funded, so they've already prioritized them. So as part of that process and council approving the actual budget, your role would be to determine whether these projects conform with the general plan. So making that determination won't change what project, it's what funds, it's already been determined by, or will be determined by, the council.
Got it, thank you. And the second question would be, some of the projects, I understand that the funds are, they are, they will, like, some sort of grant money or additional fundraising will be required, so how do we know that this project, like, how do we know for sure that this project will be well-funded and we will meet the goals?
So we have a really fantastic administrative services department that spends a lot of time on the budget and figuring out, you know, planning for the next several years ahead, trying to anticipate revenues we'll get either from development or other sources. And so again, what's coming before this evening is, it's a pretty conservative idea of what would be funded. So the anticipation is that it would all be funded as outlined in the capital improvement budget. And I should also say that in, as it's a five-year plan, but we're only looking at two years, it could be that in a year or two, something changes with that. So, for example, the childcare grants that we're giving out, there might not be as much money two years from now, so that amount might change, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you. To my left, Commissioner Castaneda?
I just have one question. Is there any plan to add solar to the City Hall roof, if they're redoing it?
That is a good question. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if anyone from Public Works would know, but maybe I could see if my colleagues on Zoom know that.
Lynette, do we have Public Works, perhaps? Yes. Yes.
Can you hear?
Please, go ahead.
Hear me? Okay. Tracy Scramalia, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director. I've been here about two months now, so there are no plans to add solar to City Hall. There's actually not a lot of, the building's actually very deceiving, so the actual area where we replace it, there's not enough area to support solar for the City Hall. That being said, we are moving forward with two other solar projects in Civic Center, one being at the library, and then one at the adult community center.
Okay, thank you. I do have just one more question. I saw that the gas tax fund, it appeared to me to be federal funding. Is that secure? Are we sure we're getting that?
I would need to check on that and get back to you. Again, I know that our finance department really tries to be conservative in terms of what they're projecting, so I would think so, but I can find out the answer and let you know that for sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify, on page 66 of the packet, this says, "Its revenue received and expended under various state of California streets and highway code sections." So to me, it looks like it's controlled by the state, but, you know, the truth, especially for transportation, is sometimes the state can control federal dollars, so, you know, good point. But it sounds like it's a local tax, or the statewide tax, state law overseas. Mr. Bundy, any questions?
Sure. I'm interested in hearing you guys share a bit more about the Safe Routes to Schools improvement programs. It looks like most, if not all, of the area's schools are included, and there's some phasing to it, so this is kind of in the weeds, but it's the kind of thing that we certainly receive comments from the public about. So could you chat a little bit more about the detail of those?
Sure, and I'll defer again to Tracy, or Hanya, I believe, who's on.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Hanya Hushmandi, the Senior Traffic Engineer for City of San Diego. Yes, you are correct, we have projects for every school, however, they are phased depending on the logistics, the complexity, and the cost of each project for each school. So that's how we have phased and prioritized them, but there are projects for every school.
Thank you very much. I'm sure folks will be great, but there's so much good work in here that's very weedy, and I think this is really the heart of, like, cities and what we do, so really kind of taking credit for the work that is included in these projects would be, you guys do a great job of that as well, so thank you.
Thank you. I have one clarifying question as to what gets into the CIP versus what does not. So the childcare fund is in here, and to me, using our childcare fund for childcare facilities, sounds like it's a public facility versus, I know we collect dollars for affordable housing, but that's not in the CIP that we would allocate dollars for particular projects, or, you know, one or two projects, to be determined. And so I just want a clarification about the childcare facilities. Will they be privately owned? And, you know, the grant program, I think, goes to private operators, but why have that in the CIP if they are privately owned?
Sure. So my understanding is that because the facility portion of it, let me just go to that slide, the childcare facility development would be something that's the city's involved with. So there's not a specific plan for that yet, but it is within the CIP program, should it ever come up. The reason I know that it's not with the other projects is because the funds that are paid into this Fund 26 are really limited, how they can be used, and so right now, the only things that can be used for are those three options shown on the screen. So you are correct that the last one, the Family and Commercial Daycare Grant Program, is for private nonprofit in-home childcare providers. The first one would be a city, maybe not a city facility, but maybe the city would help purchase land or help build it, and then it's run by someone else. Again, no plans for that, but that is in there, and that's why all the childcare kind of grouped there, even the ones of building versus a grant.
Got it. And what is the childcare space reimbursement, do you know?
I would need to look into that one.
Okay.
I believe that is, actually, I do know what that is, sorry. So developers can choose to either build childcare spaces on-site or pay an impact or a fee, which is what is funding the family and commercial daycare. If a developer, for instance, based on the formula, needed to build 50 spaces-
Right.
-and they built 60-
Right.
-we could give them credit or for those extra 10.
Extra 10.
Yeah, exactly.
Got it, and yes, thank you. I knew it was in here somewhere. It is on page 119.
If I could, through the chair also, I did just get an answer to the question about the gas tax-
Oh, yeah.
-that you asked, so it was confirmed that that money is restricted for you, so it can't be taken away. Thank you for your patience while I-
Right. No, that was helpful. Thank you for the staff out there watching and giving you answers. Okay, any other clarifying questions by any Commissioners? Commissioner Bundy?
No.
Okay.
Through the chair also to add, our Parks and Rec Director is also on Zoom, and I did not mention that, so-
Thank you.
-she's also available. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you all for supporting. Okay, well, with this, why don't we go to public comments on this item? If you'd like to make a public comment on the general plan conformity determination for the capital improvement projects, please, there's nobody in chamber, so if anyone on Zoom would like to do that, or people who would like to call into Zoom, the phone number is 669-900-9128, or if you're on Zoom, you can enter meeting ID 88635467439. You can raise your hand by clicking on reactions, and then on the raise hand icon, if you're on the phone, you can press star 9 to raise your hand, and then star 6 if I call on you. Lynette, do we have any people who would like to make a public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one, his name is Ed.
Great. Ed, welcome. Thank you for coming, and you have two minutes.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm sorry, my camera isn't working. I live on Phelps Road and San Carlos Avenue, so I wanted to make a comment on that one. I think it's a little premature, because the only way to put that one in is to take a lot of people's property, and this road is not the right size for what it is being used for currently, and there's no control at Palm, and there's no, nothing mentioned in this project about Palm. So I think it's a, something they should not be looking at right now. There's other priorities for a rundle. And I think that's all I want to say about that right now.
Great, Ed, thank you. And do we know, we're clear about which item that Ed was referring to? Was that, Ed, just to clarify, I want to make sure that we, our notes show this, was this regarding Safe Routes to School, or was this regarding traffic improvements?
Safe Routes to School?
Safe Routes, okay. And again, along San Carlos. For a rundle, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Lynette, do we have any other hands raised for members of the public?
There are none.
Okay, great. So if anyone else is online and you'd like to change your mind, you're welcome to make a public comment. And if you have questions, you know, staff may choose to answer them through one of the Commissioners picking up that question. Lynette, do we have anyone who has raised their hand?
There are none.
No? Okay, then I need a motion to close the public comment.
I make a motion to close the public comment.
Thank you. Anna Second?
Anna Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. Okay, on to Commissioner comments. Is there anyone who would like to start? Yes, Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Chair. A good discussion this evening. I believe all of the projects conform with the general plan, and I had two or three specific comments. On my street, the sidewalk repair program is very popular, and people, including me, have gotten on the list, and then we wait, sometimes for years, because there's only so much funding to go around. My comment is, if people, if the list starts to get short, maybe we consider a public service announcement or some kind of a shout-out in Spotlight to remind people that this program exists. Maybe the list is still really long, and there's not a need to do that, but I would encourage staff to just check in with the size of that list, because it's a really popular program, but I remember the public, I put my name on the list years ago when a PSA came out, and I don't know what the status of the list is now. The other comment is, some of the things on the list are really expensive. I had no idea that a sewer truck was almost $1 million, but it's a very important piece of capital equipment, and I'm pleased that it's in the plan. The last comment relates to the remodeling of the ACC Kitchen. The ACC, the Adult Community Center, is a very popular place, and I spent two or three years as a volunteer helping out in the kitchen, and the meals are delicious, and I really support the remodeling of this kitchen. It's so popular, and just a little spiff-up, I think, will go a long way towards all the people in this community having lunches. And I was in the Adult Community Center earlier today, it was full, and I had to sit outside on the patio because there was no seating inside. So that's how popular it is. So I think it's, you know, projects like this that really go to the heart of our community. So I'm glad for the sewer truck, we need it, but I'm also happy about the remodeling of the Adult Community Center kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Anand?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate staff's effort in bringing this comprehensive plan to the public and to the Commissions. The one thing that I would highly support is regular updating and planning, depending on the evolving needs, evolving requirements, and evolving technology that we can probably adopt to optimize a lot of operations as well as costs. The other thing that I really appreciate is the regular housekeeping amendments, like, they don't sound as jazzy or shiny as the new additions, but they are super important to the city, so I appreciate having them in the plan as well. And then having measurable goals and ongoing impact would be very important. Plus, last but not the least, the more the community can be kept informed and abreast of whatever's coming up, I think the more successful the plan will be overall, so I support the plan overall, and thank you for putting it together.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Castaneda?
With Belmont, I think that's very important. I just think it's comprehensive. When I drive around this city, I think we have good streets, and this is why, you know, these improvements that we're doing in keeping up with our streets and our city are very important, so I'm very pleased with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy?
Thank you very much. I too find that the projects are consistent with the general plan. I appreciate the combination of capital investments and then planning that helps us figure out what our next capital investments are. I too wanted to highlight the collaboration with Belmont for the upstream detention and that collaborative watershed approach. And then I decided the one project I'd give the shout-out on is the Holly US 101 interchange and the importance of some safety improvements there. I know a cyclist was killed late November of last year in that location, and so it's really a high priority for safe routes. And then regarding a rundle, I see that that project is scheduled for 2028. That looks like kind of the planning and design phase with the construction in 2029, so there's quite a bit of runway on that one to engage the community, which I'm sure you already intended to do. So that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to comment that it was clear, all of the findings can easily be made, that these projects are clearly in conformance with all of the many things that we want to do to make our city even more livable, more walkable, and more safe. I did want to give the city kudos, that this serves also as an accomplishments record. I don't know if everyone has seen this, but, you know, looking at the budget in pages 126, 27, 25, you can see where the money was put in the last couple of years, what was completed. You can also see some of the projects coming in under budget, and then that money moving over, you know, coming out of that line item so it can be redeployed. And then the future, the future schedule of not just these two years, but all the way through fiscal 2930. So I find this would be a very helpful budget document that really tracks us all the way back a couple of years, all the way to 2030. So thank you to staff for putting this together. And I too was happy to see dollars allocated to the Highway 101 interchange. It is a really, it is a dicey intersection and difficult for cyclists and for pedestrians, and yet, we also have- and yet we also have to have very efficient traffic flow over there for people to be able to commute. So thank you to the city for allocating dollars, and I would say good job to the city council for, you know, moving some of the funds around and making sure that these plans continue to stay updated, for changes that occur either in designs, in project costs, or shifting priorities. And so I wanted to commend this planning effort, and with that, I think we're ready to make a motion. Actually, if I could read the motion, I'd be psyched. I would like to move that the Planning and Transportation Commission adopt a resolution finding the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025 to 2026 and 2026 to 2027 are in conformance with the City of San Carlos's general plan, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated into the staff report. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Roll call?
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you. Andrea, good job. Thank you to Public Works and Parks for being on the line as well. We appreciate you all on our evening meetings. Thank you. Okay, we are on to item nine on the agenda, reports, correspondence, and general information. Item A, I appreciate written-down comments here. I give it to Andrea, recent city council actions.
Thank you, so I don't forget what to say.
Very helpful.
There's been two city council meetings since your last planning commission meeting, and so I just summarized a few of the items here. Alexandria, the Alexandria development went for both its first reading and second reading, and was approved by council along with the development agreement and the planned development plan. A presentation was done to the city council on the downtown plan, or I should say downtown streetscape. The Northeast Area Specific Plan went before the council for a study session, and then the 2045 general plan reset, which the planning commission had recommended for approval, was adopted by the city council as well.
Thank you. City council's been busy. And this is just our items. They've got items from all over, all other kinds of items as well. Item B, Planning and Transportation Commission comments or reports? Nope. Okay. Item C, any correspondence to note?
None at this time.
Thank you. And item D, planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
Sure. So our next meeting is on our regular date, Monday, the 16th, however, it will be at its earlier time at 6:00 PM, so it is considered a special meeting. The meeting itself is scheduled to start at 6:00. We are planning on doing a brief little reception beforehand to thank two of our commissioners, Garvey and Castaneda, who will be leaving us shortly, but the meeting and all the items will be heard starting at 6:00. At that meeting, as of now, we're anticipating a study session for the downtown specific plan, so not the streetscape, but the plan itself. A PD amendment for a generator at 201 Industrial, which is one of the bioscience facilities, and that this generator requires an amendment, a minor amendment to the plan development. And then a, I believe it's a CUP for the old Basset Furniture Store, a new business called Salon Republic is proposing to go in there, and so I believe they need a CUP for that. The original zoning at that site, which is the whole San Carlos marketplace, specifically prohibited personal services, so this is requesting that to come out. And so that's what we have scheduled now. If there's anything else, I will know by tomorrow, because it will have to be noticed. So as of now, I believe those are the only three items coming up. And then, as you voted earlier, there are no meetings scheduled for July, so our first one will be the first Monday of August.
That date?
I'm gonna look it up.
I see August 4th.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Really helpful update. Thank you for letting us know what's coming forward. Looking forward to celebrating with my two colleagues, who are going to be stepping down. And actually, you know, this is out of order. I'm sorry. I'm under B again. Do you have, can you give folks an update on recruitment for two new commissioners?
Appreciate that. Thank you. So the recruitment period has closed, and we did receive several applications, so I believe within the next two weeks, the city council will be doing interviews for all of the commissions and committees, but specifically for the planning commission, we have several candidates that'll be interviewed, and then that will be announced once the council interviews and makes a selection.
Great. Do you know how many people applied for all commissions together? I heard it was a very large number.
I think it was low twenties, maybe, twenty-something.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I know, spirited community we're in. I love it. Good. Well, with that, we are on to adjournment. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're adjourned.